Um, would you please read the roll call?
Sure. Annie Harla.
Whoops.
Art Johnston.
Yes.
Myself. Uh, Mike Murneke.
Here.
Uh, Harry Welty.
Yeah.
Bill Westholm.
Yeah.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Yeah.
Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson.
Here.
Uh, Secretary Melinda Tebault.
Here.
And our student representatives aren't here yet.
We have a quorum. Thank you very much. Would everybody please join me in honoring America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Member Westholm. Is there a second? Second by Member Harla. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. We move on to the reading of the minutes. Regular school board meeting, September sixteenth. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Member Harla, second.
Second.
Second by Member Welty. Um, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Mr. Member Johnston.
Yeah, back on page six, there's an item here, just bringing it up, that says Member Johnston withheld out item one, a financial report to ask for more information. I never did, just to remind, uh, Business Director, I did not receive that information. And I would like to.
I'm struggling to find this, so, uh, okay. Which one?
There's no correction needed, it's just a...
You're still waiting for the report?
Yes.
Okay. So noted with our crew. Thank you. All in favor of the approval of the minutes, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's six-zero. Uh, I think you got it? Yep. Special Board meeting, October thirteenth, twenty fourteen. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's moved by Westholm, a second.
Second.
Second by Member Welty. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes six-nothing. And Member Manning, welcome. Member Manning is now here. Good, good, good. We move on to, um, one of our favorite things to do, um, is school and community recognition. And we have a number of people here that are just outstanding, uh, people work for the district and, and volunteer in the community. And we'll have Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Crawford, uh, read the announcements while the Board goes to the front. Hit your mic. There you go.
Members of the Board, this month I'm pleased to present representatives from Laura MacArthur, Lincoln Park, Piedmont, and Stowe schools for recognition. So if they would come up. The achievement gap refers to the differences in academic performance and on-time graduation rates between groups of students. Most common, commonly, gaps are evident based on race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, gender, and disability. The goal nationally in Minnesota and here in Duluth is to raise achievement for all students and to make greater gains more quickly for those students who experience an achievement gap. Minnesota measures progress by multiple measurement ratings and focus ratings. Overall, most ISD seven oh nine schools increase their MMR, FR, or both. This month, the Minnesota Department of Education recognized several Title I schools for their progress in this regard. They designated Lincoln Park, Piedmont, and Stowe as continuous improvement schools and Laura MacArthur Elementary as a reward school. It takes a significant, it takes significant planning, collaboration, support, and hard work from people inside and outside our schools to make these gains. This growth can be attributed in part to school leadership, parent and community support, structured time for teachers, collaboration, ongoing review of individual student data, and identifying appropriate interventions, and increased funding, among other strategies. Congratulations to everyone working at these schools to support achievement for all students.
Lot of smiling faces, that's why we're in education. That's just wonderful. Okay, thank you. Um, we now move on to public audience and, uh... Uh, I'm having, well, I'm having trouble.
Ernest.
Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Um, we ask that you keep your comments to, uh, three minutes and we, uh, welcome you. Glad you came out on this beautiful day. Our first speaker is Sue Ernest. Welcome, Sue.
Members of the Board, my name is Sue Ernest and I've been a para for seventeen years. As the ASME unit chairperson for the para professionals, let me first say thank you. And I promise not to waste your time today. Waste of time, however, is, is exactly why I'm here. We've heard over and, over again how valuable the paras are in helping the educational system run smoothly. As front-facing staff, we work with special needs students to help them learn, to grow, to become functioning adults who have a chance to live and hopefully contribute to society. And as such, we take our drills very seriously. How our students perform matter to us as much as it does to their teachers. While the training we received in August was very helpful, and just like the teachers as para professionals, we deserve the opportunity to learn and grow through additional staff development. On October sixteenth, the district held a staff development day for teachers only. Our paras were informed that even though they are considered staff and valuable employees to the organization, they would not be included. And to add insult to the injury, they, they were also informed not to report to work that day since students would not be there. Unlike salaried, full-time employees, paras are considered part-time staff, work six-point-five hours a day and get paid for, by the hour. When they're not at work, through no fault of their own, they do not get paid. So for the week of October thirteenth, seventeen, our paras lost six-point-five hours of paid time when they were, were ready and able to be at school in any capacity, ten percent of their bi-weekly pay was lost. That day could have been, could and should have been used for infotech on the computer or attending some of the sessions that were offered at the staff development. The ASME union wasn't even given a chance to address the issue, and as such, the opportunity for development of the terror staff was lost that day and valuable time was wasted.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Schmidt. Thanks for coming out today, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Board members. Last time we spoke, um, I required some more documentation to bring to you on our issue, and so I have presented it in a written, well-organized summary of everything that we have to offer by providing our snowboarders with, hopefully, some high school lettering to fit their wishes.
What I have for all of you, the rider's resume, or not rider's resume...
Actually, you'll want to give this to us and then go back and talk. I won't count this against your time. Let's see.
What I have provided for you is the written summary of what we spoke of last time, which is, um, a summary of everything that we propose for the lettering program through the Duluth School District. And then also in front of you, you have the rider's code of conduct, which G-Team members must sign in order to participate on G-Team, certifying them, and they must wear their helmet, and, um, it coincides with the Minnesota High School League standards, sort of thing. Anyway, some points that I wanted to touch on that are in our summary, but I wanted to allude to more are that, um, when the students join our snowboard team, they have to have experience in snowboarding. Basically, that means they have to be able to go down the hill and function on a snowboard. After that, we teach them to be better snowboarders. Also, I wanted to say that in order to be covered by G-Team's liability insurance, they have to be on G-Team. They can't be the Duluth snowboard team and not be on G-Team. They have to be on G-Team in order to be covered by our end. But otherwise, besides that, we would love to work with the school to meet their wishes and their criteria for the kids to letter. Um, our criteria is very strict, but we are absolutely open to more suggestions on the lettering program. Um, I, we offer professional coaching. I'm a Level One Hundred USA, United States Snowboard Association coach. I have CPR training, um, heads-up concussion training, safe sport training, and overall, G-Team does many other trainings that now I am starting to teach those training programs to the other coaches. I just wanted to come up here today and one more time say that I would love to see our dedicated riders who are throwing away other winter sports to pursue their dreams and expectations in snowboarding through the G-Team and see them recognized for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Are we, uh, our next, our next speaker is Peg Omen. Welcome, Ms. Omen. And I understand, you, you have a handout also?
I do.
Well, we can do that first then, if you'd like.
There's one I forgot to say, but I just want you to have a copy of it, so, that you don't forget when I say...
There we go. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Just give it right here and we'll, give it to Ms. Selia Pankow.
I'm a para professional at Merrick Creek Academy. I have been a para with the district for almost twenty-two years, and I was a special ed teacher for four years before I had my own children. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here to speak to you about the same thing that I spoke to you about in January, the fact that we have had a staff development day taken away from us. I want you to realize that I consider the school board ultimately responsible for the fact that para professionals are losing another day of pay that we have always been paid for. The twenty-two years that I've been with the district, we always had that day. We were told a week or two before the staff development day, which was held last Thursday, that we were not to go to this in-service training and it would be a day without pay. You approve the budget. Please make a note to yourself or tell your brain to remember, as our speech teacher says, that it needs to be that para professionals will not be denied days of pay that they have always counted on to balance the school budget. As I said in January, it is morally wrong to balance the school budget on the backs of one of the lowest-paid groups of workers in the district. When you take away a day of pay, many of my coworkers have to decide how they'll pay a bill, such as our fuel bill or buy groceries for a week. We are given very little notice of this decision, a week or two by school email. I can't imagine that any of you have to worry about that happening to you, nor should you have to worry about such a thing. I have to say that after I spoke to you in January, I never dreamt that you would allow this to happen again. Our group of para professionals is here tonight, again, dressed in green, with two of us, Sue and I, speaking to you to remind you that this is not okay. As an educator, I know that repetition is important in education, so I am repeating to you how important it is that you do not take away days that para professionals have counted on. Sue has emphasized how important training is for us. We have direct contact with students, and I personally know we make a huge difference in the education of the students in this district. It is a way of caring for us and respecting the para professionals in this district to give us back our staff development days. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out. Our next speaker is Abby Benzer. Welcome, Abby.
Members of the Board, hi! My name is Abby Benzer and I'm an eighth grader at Ordine East Middle School. When I was in third grade at Lowell School, I learned how to snowboard in an after-school program with Ms. Sullivan. Since then, I've ridden with three different snowboard teams. Last winter, Coach Jonathan started helping me at local USASA competitions, and I learned that G-Team were one of my other teams entered its season in March. When I qualified for Nationals, Coach Jonathan and Ms. Johnson, my English teacher, wrote letters of recommendation to help me get a Nationals Assistant Scholarship. The scholarship paid for all of my entry fees in Colorado. I think we should be able to earn a varsity letters for snowboarding because of all the time we spend training and competing. The G-Team started dryland training at the beginning of October. Once Bear Mountain opens, we'll have team practice at least three days a week. Most of us will start competing at USASA events in January. In February and March, we can compete at the Minnesota State Snowboarding Championships at Highland and Bloomington. The USASA National Championships will be held in April in Colorado. Snowboarding with the G-Team and competing against other snowboarders has made me more confident. Learning something new can be really difficult and frustrating, but everyone on the team is really positive and encourages me. I feel so proud of Coach Jonathan because I know he's not going to push me to do something I'm not ready for yet, but also I like riding with him because he doesn't treat me differently just because I'm a girl. My parents say that my grades are the best during snowboarding season because I have to get all my homework done before I get to go down to the hill. Sometimes I can get overwhelmed if I have a lot to do, but it's okay if I need to miss practice so I can study. I was on the Merrell for the entire year last year. My GPA was the highest ever when I was training for Nationals. When I'm older, I want to help teach little kids how to snowboard. When I'm done with high school, I want to go to college in Colorado on a snowboarding scholarship. Having a varsity letter might help me do that. Most of the snowboarders I compete against have the chance to earn a varsity letter at their schools, and I think we should too. Thank you.
Abby, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Apologize if I mispronounce his name. Lynn Kino, our next speaker. How do I do? Close enough? Welcome. Thanks for coming out.
I've never done one of these before, so...
Um, I'm here for Laura MacArthur, and this is my son Franklin, and I just want to let you guys know, um, that my child, we moved from Arizona to Minnesota last year, and he was not at read le, reading level for his, he didn't know how to read, he didn't know math, and that was one of my concerns with Mrs. Hall and Mr. Grokely, and they told me that they would have him reading by the middle of the year, if not by the end of the year. To this date, he is, um, at a third-grade reading level, if not, not higher, and he is doing really good at the school. And I owe the credit to Mrs. Hall and Mr. Grokely. And being a mom of seven and him with being autistic, you know, school is very overwhelming. Me having dyslexia, I can't really, you know, teach the kids how to read, so I depend on the school to do it. And I just want to say how happy I am to be a part of Laura MacArthur, and I really hope Mr. Grokely and Mrs. Hall will be back at Laura MacArthur. Do you have anything you want to say?
Sure.
So I just wanted to make sure I come here and let you guys know what an awesome school, Laura MacArthur is. Do you want to say something to me?
Thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate... Oh, you have to move the microphone down.
I don't know what to say.
It's okay.
Thank you. Um, we move on to reading of communications, communications and petitions. We received three letters. Um, one was from twelve parents of first-grade students at Lester Park Elementary School regarding their concerns related to class sizes at the school, which they believe negatively affected areas such as learning, health, and concentration slash focus. Letters writers request an additional first-grade teacher for the remainder of the year, as well as smaller class sizes next school year. We received a letter from Barbara Walcom expressing her support of the new bully policy, encouraging all student members to do everything in their power to stop bullying. We received a letter from Eric Rudd expressing his concerns about class offerings at the Eastern versus Western schools, ways they are flooded, and asked the Duluth School Board to fund programs at the tri schools in an equivalent fashion going forward. We want to thank you for those. We now move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you. Well, first I have to say thank you to Franklin. I think they left, but that, uh, is enough to keep me going for quite some time, so that's, that's the kind of news that we like to hear. We have some great opportunities coming up in the community, uh, for the community members to learn more about Duluth Public Schools and our students and how we operate. Uh, the first is actually, uh, in partnership with the city, the mayor's, uh, initiative on bullying. The big kickoff is going to be on October thirtieth at Clyde Ironworks from six to nine, and there will be a viewing, a viewing of the movie Bully, um, and, which will be followed by discussions regarding how to best prevent and respond to bullying behaviors, uh, throughout the community. Uh, the school district is then following that event with three additional events that will be community discussions based on, uh, bullying and how to best prevent and respond to bullying, and the, the input that we receive at these meetings will be used, uh, while we design the new policies and procedures, uh, for, um, for the district. Also, at November sixth, at Lincoln, we will have the annual meeting. Now, the annual meeting is replacing, uh, what has traditionally been the, known as the State of the District Address in January, and we are, we're moving that to an October, November date. Happens to be November this year. We had to move it, uh, for a few other events. Um, from six to six-thirty, people will view student displays, student artwork, I think the robotics teams are going to be there, there's going to be, some of our music groups will be performing, and then at six-thirty, there will be, uh, I'll be making a presentation, and we will unveil the, the video of the year that will update people on how we're, how the progress that we're making on the district-wide continuous improvement plan and world's best workforce legislation. And then the presentation, um, will be followed by refreshments made by our culinary students and additional music groups performing, and it promises to be a great event, so we encourage everyone to come on out to Lincoln on November sixth. In addition to these, uh, meetings, there are lots of opportunities for people to be involved in our schools, and we encourage folks to contact their schools, the principals at the schools, to find out about volunteer opportunities. There are many, many ways to be a champion for a student in our schools, and we encourage you to do that. One last thing is, uh, a partnership that I've kind of entered into with the Duluth Firefighters and Operation Warm. We have a huge need in Duluth for winter coats for our kids, and as educators, you know, uh, myself coming from an elementary background and being an elementary principal, but also being, uh, an assistant principal at the high school, I saw kids of all ages coming to school in the winter not appropriately dressed and being very cold. And so it's something that I'm, I'm pretty passionate about, is providing jackets. And the firefighters are raising money, um, to buy winter coats for kids. They've worked out, um, some kind of deal with the coat manufacturers for thirty-five dollars a coat, and they've asked me if I would be willing to put my, my beard on the line, if they could raise enough money, if they could shave my beard, and how do I say no to jackets for kids? So I know that date is coming up here, it's next, uh, it's October twenty-seventh. If they've raised enough funds at warmduluth.org, under my name, then, uh, the next time you see me, I won't have a beard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Member Welty, if, if I could ask the Superintendent a question in the name of full disclosure, does that shaving go all the way up under your nose to include your mustache, Superintendent?
Yes, it includes all facial hair. Yes, it includes all facial hair. I'm keeping the hair on my head. I don't think they could raise enough money to go all the way. Well, I shouldn't say that, but yeah, it's the whole beard.
I have two questions. How long have you had your facial hair?
This is the oddest line of questioning I've ever had at a school board meeting.
This is very important, you know.
I, I would say that I've had facial hair of some kind for at least 15 years, and my kids can't remember ever seeing me without it, and they're a little concerned.
I think it'd really sweeten the pot if Mr. Walti would volunteer. I know I would chip in, so. All right. We move on. Education report. Member Harla, hit the button. You're on.
Great, thank you very much. Look forward to, to that event. The firefighters have been so, there's been so much going on in the community, so thanks for that report. Just want to add off the top too, there was a great walk to school day event at Lincoln Park Middle School and at Congdon Elementary and at Myers Wilkins Elementary. The kids were walking to school, getting, I know I walked with Chair Murneke and Member Lefler Kemp and got, got up the hill, and then actually it has a school picture taken when we were at Lincoln Park, but I know it was a great turnout. So again, so thankful for our community, our continued community support for our schools. Well, our education committee meeting last week was, had a lot of great discussion, had a presentation from our snowboarding, from the snowboarding folks. I know we heard from the G Team representatives today, and they, and they, they gave us a presentat- I'm going to go out of order, just because that's how it began. So the G Team did a whole, did a full kind of rundown, and it's actually really nice to have gotten some more of that information that as we continue this discussion, that we know a lot, a lot of our role is to take a look at all the different policies to make sure that kids are safe, and we know that that's, that's structurally within yours, but it's our role as a board to really look solely at how those policies go before we do that. So I appreciate that continued. It's just some more information's really good to look at. And so was really happy to have Abby was there, and then two other students joined as well too, and just great, great to hear from them, and know, good to know. It's, it's, you know, it's proven time after time that students being involved in school and out of school, having out of school time involvement really helps them. We heard Abby say that earlier in her comments, that her grades go up in that time, and that's from positive role models around them, and from kind of having that carrot to continue doing well. So thank you for presenting tonight, Abby, and way to go on staying on the merit roll. That's great. So that was our G Team competition, and it was recommended that the Duluth School Board receive that item as informational. We then had a really long discussion about our 2013-2014 Multiple Measurement System (MMR) results. And a large thank you to Dr. Lake for presenting us with a lot of information. I'm just going to read through a little bit of this. This is involved in the board packet, but it's too important not to highlight some of the overview of the conversation that we had. So just so folks know, this, this system is, is Minnesota's response to the No Child Left Behind. We actually have a waiver as a state out of, and, and we need to respond to it as a state, and so this is our school district's results through that. It focuses on closing the achievement gap and promoting high growth for all of our students, and it's built around multiple measures and directly addresses achievement gap and provides support locally for developed school improvement plans. And I think the conversation was at least 45 minutes, but it's, it's important to look that we have, we got some really good data to understand some, how some of our schools are doing, areas that we really do need to focus on in our schools, looking at, I'm just pulling this open, looking at their MMR scores, and then, excuse me, and their FR scores too. So just overall, you know, we, we saw schools tonight that were title schools that did, did excel, and we had some schools that did real well, and then we have some schools that, that do need to continue, that do need, you'll see that they need to be focusing on some of their, on some of the processes within their school, which is great because we have a couple of things that we're continuing to do this year. One is that each school is writing a school improvement plan individually. They're sitting down with administrators and a board member and talking through what their plan is for their school, what the plan is to look at data, look at student support, look at all of that. And then through that school improvement pro, school improvement plan, they're also, and teachers are also meeting this year, and this is new, it's a new amendment to our contract. We've heard a lot about professional learning communities or PLCs. That's a way that our, that our teachers come together and discuss how, how, they discuss four questions, actually. And when they, when they sit down to talk with one another, they ask these four questions. What do we want students to know? How will we know when they know it? What do we do when they don't know it? And what do we do when they already know it? And I think that really helps to us to address students as individuals and to kind of pull students out into different areas. So it's, instead of looking initially at an intervention, it's let's look at the, it's kind of looking at what is the end that you want and how are we getting to that end as a community. So really impressed with that presentation. I think that was a lot of information about it. I'm sure there'll be more discussion from the board as we move forward, but I was just really thankful to know that some of the ways that we changed our administration to make sure that we're addressing curriculum, that we have some more support in our administration at a cost neutral way that we changed this last year to be able to support those systems from the bottom up and the top down, to really look at kids first. And so I've been thinking a lot about this last week and thinking that, man, I want these test scores to change tomorrow, and we, we want that to happen, but I also appreciate that we're doing this in a measured and pragmatic way, just like adding seasoning into soup. If you add it all at once, it's not going to change it. And so what are we doing step by step to make sure that our students' growth and improvement are changing throughout the years? And so look forward to seeing how this is, and we have to trust that there were a lot of research that we have, a lot of smart people that we have working, a really solid administration leading this forward, that we are headed in a, in a positive direction, and we will continue to make little changes, just like you add a little bit of dash of salt or a little dash of cilantro to make those, those move forward. I encourage community members, if you have questions, to reach out and to ask about them. I'm, it was a great presentation. So that was that. I'm sure there'll be more conversation. The next piece is Ron Lake spoke to us about collaborative efforts regarding bullying. And he, excuse me, he brought forward to us again the partnership that the Duluth Public Schools has with the city of Duluth, just as the Superintendent spoke about. And so really hope that folks are able to make it out that night. And also, there are a lot of different ISD 709 community conversations about community bullying behavior that'll be happening in the evenings. And actually had one question, this is for the Superintendent and for staff, knowing that it's a community-related topic, I know they're all happening in the evenings, but we have people that have different shifts of work. So if we could host one during the day, if possible, so that people that work in the evenings and staff that we have that may be in the evenings, that we have something during the day, just so that we're able to capture as much of the, I know this may be set, but if we can work to have that, that group of folks accommodated, that would be great. I had a, someone brought that to me this weekend, so I wanted to make sure to bring that up. So these were, those items were all recommended as informational. Excuse me. The next piece that we have are action items, some presentations that were requiring approvals. Most of them were field trip requests. The Duluth Public Schools Business Professional Association for grades nine through 12 traveling to the Hyatt Regency in Minneapolis. Also Duluth Public Schools Business Professional Association going to Grand Rapids in January, so November for the first one, January for the second one. Then the BPA again for, in Minneapolis in March, and BPA again in May to go, to potentially go to Anaheim if they make it to Nationals. And then for HOSA, the Health Occupation Students of America, to travel to the Holiday Inn in St. Paul to participate in, in competitions. Continue to some more, again with HOSA, traveling to St. Cloud in December. And then again, HOSA, I'm just making these shorter because it's quite a lot to read, in St. Cloud to compete in the state leadership. And then also the 11th and 12th grader HOSA students to travel potentially to Anaheim if they make it to those points. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the extended field trip requests. And then it would be requested, also we had item C was access to internet student data and for non-district employees. This is for YWCA Girl Power, Bemidji State University, and University of Jamestown, North Dakota. I know that YWCA Girl Power provides a, one of our, another community program that supports our students directly. And then Bemidji State University and University of Jamestown, North Dakota. Got everybody turn their head a little bit to wonder, there, where we have some student teachers that are working there. So it's a way that, that they're able to communicate about, with, with student teachers that are in, that are from Bemidji State University and University of Jamestown in North Dakota. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above data sharing agreements. And then we have the acceptance of grant awards to the Duluth Public Schools, and attached is the resolution, so I'm going to pull that one open.
Member Harla's doing a wonderful job. She's very sick, and yet she's full of spirit. Member Harla, would you read Resolution E-1014-3209, please?
Happy to. I always lose it at the...
Page 66.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Murneke. So acceptance of grant awards to the Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 requires the school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is, is in best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grants from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it therefore resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations, the Northland Foundation...
You, you can just read the one and two, the organization.
On the Northland Foundation, and then the School Breakfast Initiative, Children's Defense Fund, Minnesota Hunger, Minnesota and Hunger Free Minnesota. And I move this resolution number E-10-14-3209.
Thank, thank you, and seconded by Member Walti. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 6-0. Member Harla, finish up.
And then our last piece for this are diploma requests in the following. Students have completed all high school graduation requirements, and they should be awarded a diploma. Amanda Dawn Pellman, Heather Marie Tollefson, Morgan John Grape, Michaela Jade Tredell, Chad Alan Pearson, David Allen Messiahek II, Caitlin Helena Leonard, and Daniel Ryan Bertzai. And it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve this list of diploma of diploma requests, and Chair, I move my report.
Is there a second? Second by Member Westall. Any discussion? Member Walti?
Yes, I'd like to withhold item A1, Multiple Measurement System results.
Wait, wait one second. I'm sorry. This is good. Okay. I'm sorry, Member Walti.
I'd like to withhold 1A1, Multiple Measurement System results.
1A1. Any others? Member Johnson?
1A2.
Any others? Okay, Member Walti, do you want to start with informational item 1A1?
Yes, there's the, the point that I'd like to make is, is for the, the public's benefit. I don't have any questions for Dr. Lake. I would like to explain that one of, there were two items that I raised that we talked about briefly in the discussion of our multiple measurement testing results. And I, I would just simply like the public know we did have an extensive conversation, and part of that conversation involved the question of, of the continuity of testing through the years. I was first elected to the school board back in 1995, and since that time, there have been a number of changes to the tests that we, we distribute to all of our children. And one of my personal frustrations is that from the standpoint of continuity, it's very, very difficult to figure out how to, how to judge where we were or where we've come from as these tests change. And that's just life for school boards today, and we're no different from anybody else. We're all in the same boat, but it is a frustration that I raised and we talked about. And then we also, at least I asked the question about the, the time taken to teach and whether or not we were teaching to the test. As for the issue of, of the time taken, I was given a give, a general sense for, for how much time students have to take these tests during the school year. I have heard what I consider some horror stories on public radio the other day, mentioned a school where the students spent about 15 days of their school year testing, which means that they lose about, about 20, 25% of their, their time to, to, to learn, to take tests. That does not seem to be the problem in the, an issue in, in the Duluth schools, and I'm gratified to hear that. So that was just sort of an amendment to the public listening to this of other items having to do with the, the testing. And that's all I, I wish to do was just make that amendment.
Thank you. Member Walti. Member Johnson?
Yeah, I'd like to also make a couple of comments on that. First, on the bottom of page one, the goal is to reduce achievement gap by 50% within six years, certainly a laudable goal. I'd like to have that goal eliminated at 100% in six years. Somewhat, it's going to be difficult, of course. Six years, it started in 2012, that's, six years actually is 2016, 17, that means two years. We have a long way to go, but I certainly appreciate the, the goal and would like to see that 100%, not 50%. I do have a question for Dr. Lake back on page eight. These are the, the score results of all the schools, but yet the, the way, the way we get defined by reward schools and celebration schools, et cetera, as a percentage, and I'm, I'm thinking if these numbers are raw numbers and not percentages, I'm, so if you could correct that, or tell me if, if that is, those numbers are raw numbers.
Dr. Lake?
The numbers that you see in the report are the numbers that are used to identify our focus, priority, and continuous improvement schools. It's on a scale from zero to 100. Each domain is worth 25 points, and it's talked about in terms of points and percentages being on a 100-point scale.
Okay, well, if we have a focus school, which is Lowell Elementary, which is the lowest 10%, I don't see anything below 10% on Lowell, so that's why I'm wondering about the number.
What that is, is lowest 10% of Title I schools across the state, based on those multiple measurement ratings or those focus ratings, in comparison to other elementary schools.
Okay, that's what I thought. Could you give us numbers of what the percentage of each school is? Not now, I know you don't know it now, but could you give that for us for the school, for these, because that's how they're rated, and I'd like to see what the, where the rating goes on percent of all our schools.
Sure.
Thanks.
See another light, oh, I'm sorry, Superintendent Gronseth.
I just, I just wanted to jump in there. I don't know that we've ever received the exact percentage of where those schools are. When we get those determinations saying that they're a focus school, they don't, we know what their scores are, but we don't know, like they, they were at, you know, 8.7 of that 10%. I'm, you know, we can find out if we can get that information, but it's not information that we automatically comes with that.
Member Johnson?
If you can get it, that'd be great. Assuming these are percentile ratings, and I would like to double check the state. If they're saying we have lower-rated schools, I want to see the numbers and make sure they're correct for one thing, and also to see how they do rate. So if you can do that, that would be appreciated.
Superintendent?
I just want to, I'm not sure we're, we're on the same note here. It's not a percentile. It's, they take all of the scores of all of the schools in the state and list them from the highest to the lowest. And the lowest 10% of those schools are focus. So it's, even though the entire state could be raising their scores, it's always that the bottom 10% of that list. So that number could change from year to year depending on how we do and how other schools do in comparison, because it's always the bottom 10%.
Dr. Lake, please.
I'm sorry.
What I could get to that might be helpful is, as I had said before, the elementary schools are compared against other elementary schools across the state who receive Title I funding. Our middle schools are compared with other middle schools, high schools, other high schools. And then our alternative centers are compared against other alternative-type sites across the state. And what I could do is I could tell you for elementary schools, for example, what the cut score was to be considered the bottom 10%. So for example, if Lowell Elementary School was identified as a focus school based on their focus rating of 45.005, I could tell you what that cuts... their focus rating of forty-five point zero oh five, I could tell you what that cut score was that, that they were under. Would that be helpful? Okay, I can do that.
Member Laffler Kemp?
Just a comment for the public as well. Again, thank you, Dr. Lake, for the excellent presentation you gave us and the opportunity to ask lots of questions last week. I think it's just always important when we have these tests and that the public understand that this is just one of the many tools, one of the many interventions that are helpful for teachers and staff to focus on the needs of kids. And we also spent a lot of time just talking about the many ways interventions then are used with this information. And again, we also spoke about the ways it fits into our goal of around the achievement gap for the district as well. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Dr. Lake?
I think you made a good point about that. I think that one thing that maybe the public doesn't understand or it isn't articulated very clearly is that although we're getting multiple measured, we're getting a rating on multiple measures, it really is based on one test that was taken on one day. So if any number of our kids happen to have a bad day on that day, that's what these are all calculated on. It's not, it's not a composition of several tests over a long period of time. We're still talking about that one test that was taken last spring by each of our students individually.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Education Committee report.
Please help.
I'm sorry?
Help.
Oh, no, I thought we just said two. Did you have more? I'm sorry.
I had A2.
Oh, you know, and that was my fault. I went right down. All right, I apologize. Go ahead.
Sure, just a couple of comments, and as I say, this is a great opportunity for us to go forward with anti-bullying. And I'm gonna bring up my spouse's situation. She's given me permission to do that. She has been bullied extensively, she claims, by school administration. And worse of all, her complaint has been sitting for, sat for almost four months without even being looked at. And again, I think it's important, we have to move forward on this and this, but I think we have to clean up our own act as well. I will wait, it looks like Mr. Sworowski is going to contest what I just said.
Swob, Mr. Johnston, I'd like to congratulate you on your wedding. Is your spouse, is that correct? Wife, spouse?
What's the point?
I don't believe it is your spouse. If you look up the definition of spouse, that woman is not your spouse or your wife.
Well, thank you for that.
Is there a point of order? Is this a point of order by, all right?
Yes, I would, I, you're dealing with some confidential information here. There's also much more to this story than you're letting on. It cannot be discussed in public. So I'd appreciate it if you can't tell the whole story, just don't use some sort of shield to tell your side.
There are some pending investigations going on, and I'm gonna caution everybody that we need to be very careful on what we're talking about, not to involve any real personal stories on this, but a general education committee report on Ron Lake is, if we have questions about the collaborative efforts regarding bullying, then let's stick with that, please. Thank you. Member Johnston?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, too. It's kind of odd to see this high-ranking school administration attack me on my martial status, and I find that very peculiar. And my spouse is sitting back there, and if she wants to vet us for...
I'm gonna have to interrupt you again. This is, we have a, you wanted to pull one, two collaborative efforts and talk about Ron Lake and his program. Let's do that, not insert our personal problems that we're having right now. Please, thank you. Member Johnston?
Sure, I would ask that you do tell your administration the same thing. You know, extremely rude behavior on his part, very upsetting, and I think the shield is, the shield, who's putting the shield up here? Obviously by the administration here.
All right. We have a point of order from Member Laffler Kemp. Did you, oh, okay.
I want to stick to the conversation on...
That's on the agenda.
Okay. Member Walti?
This is not germane to the item two, but I think it is germane to where we are right now. As a school board, we've had some difficulty functioning for almost half a year now, and I know that there are some people who have offered to try to get us together and talk, and it would be nice to have some of those conversations together honestly and not necessarily burden the public with them. That's just aside. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for...
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Walti. Thank you. Member Johnston? And again, I'm hoping we can stick to the Ron Lake report here.
Yeah, I think this, again, I started out, this is a great opportunity for us to do this, it's something that we should take an opportunity on. And it isn't just between my personal situation and the board, which is bad enough, but I hear repeatedly from parents as well that administration is not being responsive, they're being very dismissive. I've even heard some administrators say that when parents come up and talk to them, that they're being bullied. That's a whole new stretch of the definition. So I think we have a long way to go here, and looking forward to these discussions. I hope that we, as a school board, can take some of that to heart, and I hope that the administration can as well.
Thank you. Member Harla?
I just want to remind the public that this, the piece that we have going on with the film screening and the community discussions on bullying is actually a part of a broader discussion that we're having about bullying. So hearing what Member Johnston is saying about having that as a broader discussion, but want to remind folks that this is not just a one-time event, there's actually a plan that we've heard month after month about, about a community conversation about the bullying, the anti-bullying policy with regard to the Safe and Supportive Schools Act. So, thank you.
All in favor of the Education Committee report signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes six-zero. We now move on to the Human Resources Report. Member Walti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, the Human Resources Committee met for at least an hour, which is very heartening to me. Remember, ten years ago, frequently we meet for five, ten, fifteen minutes, and that was it. So it's obviously become a much more, maybe with a lot more gravitas in recent years. That's good. We have a, began our report with the staffing report, and I'll just read through the quick litany. There were eleven certified appointments, three certified leaves, one certified permanent decrease, three certified permitted increases, four certified resignations, five certified temporary decreases. There were ten certified temporary increases, twenty-three non-certified appointments, two non-certified extensions, three non-certified leaves, five non-certified permanent decreases. There were seventeen non-certified permanent increases, three non-certified promotions, one non-certified recall, thirteen non-certified resignations, one non-certified retirement, one non-certified temporary increase, three non-certified temporary increases. This is still the beginning of the year, and I think I can, I can give people hope in the future that this portion in succeeding or following months will be a little bit shorter as we stop doing all the dancing with new employees moving around and being hired. Under action items, we had a, an approval, job description for a lifeguard, and as we discussed and was noted in the News Tribune, the lifeguards are already in the pools watching out for the safety of our children in response to a very hazardous situation at the beginning of the school year, and we were all grateful for that. Stipend change approval for dance coach and head and assistant coaches were discussed. There was a discussion about just how the stipends work and who counts as a coach. The recommendation was that the school board accept and approve the stipend changes for the dance coach, head and assistant. There was also a stipend approval for the robotics teams, robotics teams, the remarkable robotics teams, that the public has been able to read so many glowing stories of in the Duluth News Tribune. The recommendation by administration is that the school board accept and approve the above stipend for robotics. There were a number of informational items. We had Ron Lake talk to us about the district-wide communication climate coordinator, and there was a discussion of the superintendent review process. I'll have a question about that myself, but we were provided by administration a critique for school board members to make and rate our superintendent. And then, let's see. Is that pretty much it? Well, I think we will talk about the one item. I would like to continue on about the question of the superintendent review process, but Mr. Chairman, that is my, my report for Human Resources.
Thank you. You're moving the reports?
Yes, I move the adoption of the Human Resources Report for Tuesday, October twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
Seconded by Member Harla. Discussion, Member Walti?
Yes.
Member Walti, just for a point of order for a second. Snowboard, we're pretty much done. You'll get, you'll get a report from us. I don't know, you know, that was in the education report. You're welcome to stay for as long as you want, but we will get back to you on any of the decisions, so, thanks. Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. I, I remember sitting in the audience on a number of occasions, waiting, waiting and waiting for final action by the board. So if you want, you can, your presence might provide good karma, I don't know, so it's up to you whether you stay. The question I have is this. I just want to...
Yes, okay. Member Harla? Let's see if I can do this.
Usually we pull items and then discuss them, and I had, other than the superintendent's contract, had one other item to pull.
I didn't hear that last part?
I had one other item to pull. Excuse me.
After, after Member Walti, we can, which one do you want to pull?
I'm just guessing, so for process sake, to keep going, it was just a clerical thing on staffing report action items, a number.
Okay, we'll do that after, Member Walti, if that's okay?
Right.
Member Johnston?
Three A as well.
Three A as, well, oh, three A, okay, thank you. All right. Member Walti, I think I've interrupted you three times already. Let's hope I don't do it again. You continue, please.
I should have asked, I suppose, officially to withhold it, even though this is my committee. We were given a set of questions. I don't know if these are the same as were submitted to the school board last year. I wouldn't mind, frankly, being able to see the overall report last year, since this is my first year with the new superintendent and as a new school board member. I had no, I had no concerns about the questionnaire that we were provided, quite happy to make use of that in the review process. What I, I guess, I was thinking about that before the meeting tonight. What we are planning on doing tonight, if we adopt the HR Committee Report, is commence that process of having this, the superintendent review. Is that so, Mr. Sworowski? And would that be concluded by any particular time? I don't recall a timeline being associated, just the month of October being mentioned as the appropriate time.
I believe the plan at this time is I will send out the digital copy of this review right around the time of the November sixth talk, probably maybe a day or two ahead of that. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll compile that. Hopefully, the plan will be maybe to have a closed session prior to the November board meeting, or sometime in between there, to have that discussion with the superintendent on the review, and then there will be kind of an overall summary after that.
Just, that raises a point. I do recall, I think when we were talking about the contract early on in this school year, that we were not able to keep our comments related to the contract in a closed meeting, that we had to do that here publicly. Is there some reason why the discussion of the review, which I believe will be made public, would be held behind closed doors any differently than our discussion of the superintendent's contract and reasons why we might have questions about that?
Yeah, this is a personnel record that will go in his personnel file. It would not be a public document that would be shared. However, having said that, there is, the public portion of this is a summary of an overall performance, and we did put one out in public last year after the review.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, just for my personal edification, I'd like to be able to see what it looked like last year, the portion at least that was made public.
Okay, I'll get you a copy.
Thank you. I remember going through this. The questions are quite thorough and wide-ranging, and we had a nice discussion about it last time. I'm happy with the instrument. Member Harla, this is about the superintendent, okay?
I just, I wanted to comment that, so this is a tool that's done by the board itself for the superintendent, but when asked how he gets additional feedback from members of the public that he's worked, as he said in past years, he's done it with the administrative cabinet, with the principals, and so he continues to seek additional feedback from other folks that he works with beyond the school board. So, I wanted to note that, and glad to know that you do that as a superintendent.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Sure, I do have some concerns about this process. First of all, answer, Harry Walti, this is identical to what we did in February two thousand and twelve, and I think a lot of things have changed since then. I think we, as a board, should consider making some revisions on this. The biggest revision or change that we've had since then was the Continuous Improvement Plan that was adopted by this board in July of two thousand and thirteen. I think those are things in there that we talked about quite a lot at the time, which I think there's a lot of important items in there, and we even talked about, this would be an item to rate the superintendent. I'm not saying that we should necessarily use this thing to rate the superintendent, but I think the point is well-taken that some of these items should have been, should be included in a, in a evaluation of the one employee that we do are responsible for as a board. There's a couple of things in there that I want to bring up that I would suggest we add in there, would be to, to reduce achievement gap by fifty percent. We just talked about that, by two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. I think that's a very important item. There's also to, to actually decrease bullying based on student surveys and staff behavior, staff surveys. That's also in the Continuous Improvement Plan. I think that's a very, very important item as well. Reduce class sizes by ten percent. That's certainly, I think, a critical item that we're looking at. Decrease, increase the diversity of staff to be consistent with the community demographics. That's, you know, I think absolutely a critical item that we have to include in that due to the way, how much progress have we made? I'm gonna add another one on top, in addition to the, those items in the Continuous Improvement Plan would be the curriculum parity between West and East. I would like to add that, and just another item that I would like to add. And one thing I forgot to add, I think a very important thing in the Continued Improvement Plan is to increase the market share of students. At the time, I was concerned that we should have had, put a number in there. I think the superintendent at the time mentioned that he would rather see a market share, which I understand, and that increasing that market share by two percent. Again, this is again by the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen times. So those are items that I'd like to ask this board to consider putting on, and I think these are items that we've already, except for the curriculum between... these are items that we've already, except for the curriculum between East and West, you know, there's certainly the other ones, it's right out of the continuous improvement plan verbatim. And I'd like to see those added. I think it's important.
Superintendent Grandseth? I just want to say, I I don't really disagree with having the district wide continuous improvement plan worked in as part of an evaluation, but I would hope that we not pick and choose action steps under goals and aims to be the only things, that if if it weren't included, the whole thing would be included. Also, I I think that any changes that you want to make to what you're going to measure my success on, needs to be done for next year's. I don't think it would be fair to say, oh, by the way, we're going to measure you on this next week, without having time to to develop that. And, you know, some of the items that aren't in the district wide continuous improvement plan are what I'm referring to, things that, sure, we have been working on, but have not necessarily been goals of the district.
We did this last year. It's a good instrument. It's a wide-ranging instrument. It's too late in the game right now to make these changes, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we don't make these changes, and if we want to, we can add them to next year's. There's no rush here. We can do this. We can, we can make changes to the the instrument. We talked about this, we talked about this in the human resources meeting last week. And I think at this time, we need to go ahead with the instrument we have right now. And again, and Member Welty mentioned, he hadn't, he hadn't participated in this, I've been through a lot of evaluations, and I find this, I'll say this again, a wide-ranging instrument that gives you a lot of latitude for compliments and criticism. Member Welty?
I don't disagree with you that we don't want to set the the bar at the end of the year, which we're doing in the evaluation, so I think that point is well taken, although I must confess that all the points that Member Johnston raised, raised my interest, because they all are extremely important. So I think that we should consider having them for the evaluation next year. The question I have, again, since I am a newcomer, was the district wide continuous improvement plan in effect when the evaluation process went last year, and was that indeed part of the, what was being evaluated in the previous year? Or is this this a creation of this year and and not something that we would have been working towards in anticipation of this year through the year?
Look at those goals as their goals of the district, of which, in running the district, between the school, and there's kind of a team there between the school board and the superintendent, in accepting and achieving those those goals. To Member Johnston's point, if as a group, the board members wanted to create a set of goals in conjunction with the superintendent for that next year, there's, there's nothing wrong with that process. I believe on the on the review, it talks about achievement of goals, and it's not unusual for other school boards, boards in conjunction with the superintendent to develop a set of goals. I do believe we view those goals as the goals of the district, and and the superintendent somewhat responsible for making sure they're carried out. It's a four-year plan also, something else to keep in mind.
Specifically, Mr. Sworowski, is the district wide continuous improvement plan a creature of this year, or was it in existence through much of last year?
It wasn't, yeah, I think it was created probably over a year and a, a year and a half ago, but this is probably the first full year we've had a run at it.
Superintendent Grandseth?
The district wide continuous improvement plan was put in place last fall in response to the Think Kids process from the year before. So the focus of the 2013 Think Kids process was developing a vision, a mission, and priorities based on community input. And from those, from the information that we gathered during that process, we developed the district wide continuous improvement plan to be the the focus of our work. And so they were just put in place last year.
Member Welty, one more question, we're going to move around, then you can come back again.
When I went to the the Think Kids meetings, we were, we were going to the public with something that had been kind of devised with the help of the public in six months before that.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Member Johnston?
Yeah, again, just to clarify again, the, this was originally endorsed, I had the year wrong, it was February of 2013, the continuous improvement plan, as the superintendent said, was adopted by the board, actually, in July of 2013. So this is is new. But I think I have to say that I think that to say that this is too late to change anything, we were just given this here a week ago. And so when does the opportunity come in to change? I know we originally talked about the the whole, the superintendent's contract, I think where it was at back in February, I believe, or March or something. And we haven't had any discussions since then, so to now to say that was too late, I think that kind of cuts us out of the loop, which I don't really appreciate. I think that it's even more important when we, the the continuous improvement plan, I think, is good. Again, we talked about that, and we accepted by the board. And at the time, it was said that this is expected, this is going to be a a tool to be able to rate the superintendent, that was the discussion at the time, so this is certainly nothing new. I think also that the form, I have no, no problem with the form that we now have, it's just that I think it's incomplete. I think that there's some good things in there, it's kind of touchy-feely for me. I think we go, you know, the new, we're supposed to do everything data-driven, our meaningful measures is data-driven, our achievement tests are data-driven. And the continuous improvement plan is also data-driven in the sense that what what surveys, what percentage of people are the students and staffers surveyed think that bullying is a problem? That shows if we've got real measured changes or not. Reducing class size is a real measurement, it's a real hard measurement that we can do. And I think it's important that when we put our teachers to expect them to increase our test scores by hard measurements, I think that the superintendent should also be held to a similar standard. And that's, that's why I think it's important here that we can and should go ahead and revise this now.
Member Westholm?
Yeah, listening to this, I would agree with Member Johnston that we, if we're going to revise it, we need to revise it now, but when I first looked at at the proposed document, it struck me as being, you know, you are the CEO, and so we want to rate all kinds of things, but it was getting to be too broad, there was too much in it. And I think it needed to be, it still needs to be more focused, and in that sense, it should be a shorter document. There were all kinds of things that I didn't feel qualified potentially in evaluating. Some things I was, felt comfortable, but I think we need to be careful to make sure that the final document we have is one that is truly focused on the function of the superintendent as we want that job to be focused, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Member Westholm. Member Saligapunko. Member Afra Kemp, the name is Saligapunko.
Yeah, this hyphenated name thing, huh? I was just going to make two comments. I appreciate, Member Westholm, your comments there. I, this did come up at the Human Resource Committee, and we did have a brief discussion about, should we make changes now? And I know it was discussed a bit, that, let's raise this again after we finish this year's process with if we want to make any changes. And and I think what was also discussed there was that some of us, this will be our first time through the the process of reviewing the superintendent, others, they've used this process last year. We also did touch on that the School Board Association and their September magazine that they put out, there was an excellent article for all of us to review concerning the superintendent's process. And I guess I, for one, think that there's lots of opportunity through the the evaluation that instrument that we were given to put comments that would fall under different categories related to the district wide improvement plan as well. And I recall Mr. Sworowski saying that there will be some numbers as well that will be averaged out to the public, and that information will go to the public, as well as some some general comments as well to the public. Is that correct?
The overall rating numbers don't go to the public. The overall rating, though, based on the composite of those numbers, is made public.
And this is in line with Minnesota State statute, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Tim, Superintendent Grandseth?
I just wanted to point out that this specific tool isn't something that that I picked out. This is what the board came to me with initially, asking if if I agreed with this tool, and at the time, I agreed that that could be used as as my evaluation. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's nothing that I personally crafted or picked out.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
I think that it's important to read the article from the Minnesota School Board Association. I think that that is, I wasn't going to bring that up, but that's very clear, particularly if you go back and read their resource or 10-page supporting document on their webpage, that they strongly recommend that that such an evaluation, any superintendent evaluation be put together by the board and the the board chair. And when this is put together, Tom Casper was the chair, he indicated to me that, no, he did not put this together. This was given to us as a board, as Tom related to me, because I didn't, I hadn't seen it until we were given to us. So again, I don't have any real problem with this, I'm just 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 clarifying what did happen in the past. I think we could do better. So then, I'm going to make a motion that we table this item until the next meeting.
Motion to table, is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. Member Harla?
I was actually going to make a motion that, excuse me.
Do you have, Tim, do you have something to say, too?
It was a separate-
Well, wait. Um, let's, let's, Tim, do you have something to say on the last issue? Mr. Sworowski, okay, there you go.
I'm-
Point of order.
It's a, it, it's an informational item right now, so I'm not sure exactly what you're wanting to table.
Well, there's no seconds.
Yeah, and there's no second, so let's just move on. Member Harla?
I would just hope that once we finish this-
Oh, I hope we finish this.
When we, we will. When we do, that we do a SWOT analysis of it, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for this, and that, and I would agree, some of these, the points that Member Johnston brought up are good to, good to have a conversation about, but we'll follow up after, and then hopefully, we as a board can discuss how we are doing with those as well. Thank you.
Member Welty? Thank you, Chairman, a couple of points. I guess the first thing that I'll I'll mention is is the the observation that it was the board who put this together. Well, not this board member. This was brought to our our HR committee meeting, prepared in advance, perhaps the the board from last year had a hand in developing all this. I think that just the nature of boards is this, the boards who hire a CEO or, or in this case, a superintendent, have to evaluate their hire based upon the performance. And I don't know that, even if we made our ratings public on on the many, many questions on the the instrument that we're considering, that we would, they would derive much clarity. I I think Mr. Westholm's comments were, were, I agreed with him. We have some pretty, pretty clear expectations, I think the public has some pretty clear expectations of us. I don't know that the evaluation that we currently have is 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 going to get us where we want to, if we're looking for for something specific to evaluate the superintendent. I'm willing to go along with it for the time being. I was tempted to to second Member Johnston's motion, but I do have this question, from what I just heard, I guess I was presuming that if our HR committee report is accepted, we essentially are accepting this, and you would, you would go ahead with the process as it was laid out to us.
That's correct.
And and so it would, in effect, be made effective, and we would soon act on it as is, with no changes.
That's correct.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm, I just simply want to make the the public and the superintendent understand that I certainly will have all these very specific things in mind, even if they're not addressed in the questionnaire, when I fill it out, and I, I suspect all the board members will. I mean, we all want the school board to do well, and we are data-driven, as as Member Johnston says, and and that's what I think the public expects of us these days.
Member Welty, if you'd like, we could put this revision for next year, for the for the next year, we could put this on a future HR agenda, and I would like to stay with the one we have now, only, again, I think it's a good instrument, I really do, and I really think it gives you ample opportunity to criticize, not you, people, ample opportunities to to levy criticism. If we want to put this on a future HR and redesign an instrument, that would be fine, is that something you'd like to do?
I would very much-
Whoop, let me, there you go.
I would very much like to do that, and and hopefully, we can have a committee or a group of us set set this up and have it prepared before next year and act on it, perhaps with with the the start of the the new school board.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson, a point?
I think the discussion is getting around to the point that I was going to, I guess, share with the board. I think we're talking about two distinct processes here. You're talking about a review process first, for some assessment of the past several months or whatever. At the same time, I hear you're talking about setting expectations for a future period, and to the extent that the stake was put in the ground, so to speak, I would suggest with the document that you have for this past review period, that does not limit you or prohibit you in any way, shape, or form from coming up with a set of new expectations for the coming period, and to have additional discussion about that. So I'm just trying to keep the process, I think it'd be a good idea to keep the two processes separate.
Thank you, I agree. Okay. I see no further lights. Member Johnston, 3A.
This is the norms. Again, this is a great opportunity, I was really thankful to see the school developing something like this. In fact, I get so much, I'm going to read a few things on it. Communication. Interpersonally, we will communicate as professional. We will actively listen, seek to understand multiple perspectives, and share and information in a timely manner. Another item, the aim of all communication will be to discuss ideas and foster community. Under cooperation, it says, with helpful intent, we will open and, we will be open and flexible in our approach to working together. We will value one another and his/her opinions. We will strive for consensus and use compromise to resolve concerns. Once final, we will represent common messages and decisions in the manner intended and agreed upon. Under teamwork, it states, we will establish a positive culture of working together to achieve common goals. We will recognize the importance of relationships, focus on strengths, and integrate- of relationships, focus on strengths and integrate personal perspectives. And, uh, it does say, we will be tight about outcomes. Uh, I'll skip that one. That was the preference we just had. And a conflict, it states, we will assume positive intent and see conflict as an opportunity to continuously improve. And we will share our concerns, address our challenges with those involved. Necessary, we will seek help, compromise or agree to disagree. And mistakes happen. If we make a mess, we will clean it up. We will listen and ask questions, understand each other, work to restore relationships and solve problems. I like it. And I'd like to thank Mr. Walty for bringing up, uh, earlier that this is what we should be doing.
Thank you. Um, Member Laffler Kemp.
I just wanted to mention for the public, uh, these norms are on page seven. And, uh, really appreciate the work, uh, Mr. Lake, as well as a committee that was comprised of teachers and principals and administration and staff representatives, uh, did to, to put this together. And, uh, that, uh, this also was again, a part of the, the Think Kids process as well. And again, the continuous improvement plan. And so please review page seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Harla.
It's a very minute detail, but on page three of the, of one A, it was, uh, for non-certified permanent decrease. It said the total was five, but it's actually seven. It's so small, but just want to make sure that it was, no, you, you, no, you've made sure to remind me of that stuff too. So just, just making sure for the record that.
Did you get that, Mr. Sworowski? Okay. Thank you. Um, I think that's covers all the, moved and seconded to accept the Human Resources Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes six, zero. We now move on to somebody who's doing double duty. Maybe I'll help you out here. To the, um, Business Committee Report. Member, uh, Laffler Kemp.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I want to start my report as well, just, uh, thanking again our administrative staff, uh, for providing us with many written pieces of information and being available at our committee meetings, uh, as well as, I know, answering numerous questions over the phone as well as, uh, by email. And so, uh, uh, just thank you again for the work that you do to help us. Um, the Business Committee Report then, on page three is the usual, uh, financial reports. Um, uh, on page sixteen is the budget revisions. Um, uh, on, uh, page twenty is the wire transfers. Page twenty-one, investment transactions. Uh, page twenty-two, WADAM projections and page twenty-three fundraisers. Uh, there were no bids, RFPs or quote reports. Uh, no policy and regulation changes. Uh, under four, contracts, changeovers and leases. Um, recommended, uh, approving the contract for Marlees Johnson, mental health consultant. And it is recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the contract with Marlees Johnson in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars. And again, uh, her work is providing mental health consulting services to Headstart parents, students and staff for 2014 to 15 school year. Uh, under page twenty, on page twenty-seven, changeover, Congdon Park Elementary School. And this has to do with, recommended that the school board approv, uh, approve the change order as listed above at Congdon Park Elementary School reflecting a total decrease of two thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Decrease. Uh, and then, uh, we go into the resolutions. Would you like me to move forward?
If you'd please, if there's no objection, we'll do the two resolutions, starting with B-ten fourteen thirty-two oh six. Member Laffler Kemp.
On page thirty, I move resolution B-ten fourteen thirty-two oh six. It's, uh, resolution authorized student activity bank account signer resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that it hereby authorizes the following, uh, from the Headstart, uh, a, a, a change on the authorized signer for Headstart. Uh.
Is that it? Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Harla. We're doing double duty here. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero. And then something we are required to do every year now, or will be to accept donations this way. So Member Laffler Kemp, if you would.
So on, on page thirty-one, resolution B-ten fourteen thirty-two oh seven, I move this resolution, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute four six five point oh three requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the donor, donations in accordance with the donor, donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described, uh, donation from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth within. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And there's a list of them, um, uh, going to, uh, East High School, uh, in a number of different organizations. Uh, Lester Park for their school forest, Denfeld High School for, uh, robotics skills team, uh, cheer team, um, as they're listed on page thirty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Westholm. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes six, nothing. Thank you, Ms. Laffler Kemp. If you'd continue, please.
And then, uh, informational items on pay, beginning on page thirty-two, expenditure contracts. And again, these are, uh, Superintendent Grunseth or the Director of Business and Finance has signed the following contracts. And I, again, encourage, uh, the public to take a look at that. Uh, many of these programs, uh, uh, show great examples of partnerships and initiatives that, uh, the school district is involved with. And, um, uh, so please review page thirty-two. Uh, uh, on page fifty-one is other contracts. Uh, page fifty-four, facilities management and capital project status report. And page fifty-seven, quarterly reports of grants and donations. And then just future items will be the, uh, fourteen financial audit, Woodland Hills lease agreement, Voyager's bus company contract and cash flow borrowing, which, uh, process will be starting in December. I, I move the Business Committee Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Second by Member Westholm.
Um, let me go back for a second here.
Member Johnston?
Pulling out items, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Number, um, one A, one F, three, four B one. Let's see, hold it, four B one.
Okay. No others. All right. Uh, one A, Mr. John, Member Johnston.
Sure, I can go back to again, remind people I did have questions on the vendor checklist last month and which I was asking about and would, would we, could like to get those answered. I can remind you again later if you would like. Uh, this month, there's some other similar items that, or not similar, I think one, this one I asked last month, there's an item from AARP, which I'm assuming is the, uh, isn't that Association of Retired People? For six, seven thousand last month, it was, um, uh, sixty-five hundred. It seems like an ongoing thing. And again, just asking what that is. If anybody knows what that is, I can certainly get it later, but it did pique my interest. Anybody?
Anybody?
Okay, all right.
Okay, that'll be sent to you.
Okay. Since I'm a member of AARP and maybe some of that could be coming to me, but, um, I don't think that's what it is.
One F?
Um, also on the vendor checklist, one A, um, one of the other ones I had last week was, made a lot of school, looked like a school, uh, things like the principal associations. And I'm just wondering what that was. I didn't see it this month. Uh, this month, we had another, we had another MSBA one for five thousand. Last month, it was thirteen thousand. Just seemed like, that's another ongoing thing. I'm just wondering, it seems like a lot of money we're giving to MSBA. And again, don't, uh, would like to, if somebody could answer me that, uh, it'd look to see what happens. Every month, the last two months, it's pretty, it's pretty sizable. Um, one thing I did, uh, I go back since I was looking back, I added up our legal costs for this year. There were fifty-nine thousand. Forty-two thousand of that went to, uh, Kevin Rupp. Just pointing that out, which I think that we're spending a little too much on lawyer fees here. Uh, so it's only questions I had. Hope to get some of those answered.
Okay. Um, one F WADAM. Hit your button. There you go.
Uh, sure. I want to again, thank the Duluth News Tribune for having a good article on our WADAMs and the nice charts that we had there. That was, uh, was appreciated. Uh, I'm hoping that this is a, a sign of, uh, change. This is the first year we've had a stable popular, or student population, um, for I guess about, uh, almost twenty years. I'm hoping that's good. But I do want to again, say the same thing, concerns that I've mentioned before, is we are not doing well. It's good that we're not going down, but we have to go up. Uh, we've lost fourteen hundred students since I've been on the board. You know, the state figures that's about, we get about ten thousand per student is what the state figures in total money coming into us. That's fourteen million dollars. Lot of money. Um, again, uh, we, we are also quite a bit below where we were predicted on the red plan. We're six hundred and fifty students, uh, below what the red plan predicted. And that, uh, that's, we were supposed to be an increasing by something like fifty students per year according to the red plan. Uh, we're not. And, uh, we got ten up this year. That would, that certainly was better than, uh, two hundred, like we've done in previous years, but we have to go up. And I think that it's important. I did, I mentioned when we talked about the, uh, about the, um, superintendent evaluation and continuous improvement plan. I figured out the market share. I know we talked about market share of students. I think that's a good measure. Going back to two thousand twelve, if we go back to the, that market share and was increasing from two thousand twelve, two percent, um, that means that would put us at over about nine thousand fifty students is what our goal is. And I certainly support that goal and the continuous improvement plan. And I'm hoping that means we're short about, uh, five hundred students. We got a long way to go. So again, bringing that up, I always bring it up because this is how we get our money. And we are not doing good. And we're way below expectations of, uh, predictions that were, had been done for the last seven years.
Member Harla.
I just wanted to comment on the WADAM projections I noted. I found an article that was in Star Tribune where Minneapolis Public Schools projected to have five hundred new students and they got ten. So they have to cut millions of dollars from their budget. And so I'm glad that we're careful in how we plan for the coming year. And this was something that, um, as I was getting trained in for the board and learning a lot more about WADAMs, that, that's how we end up tying, um, tying that too. So I'm glad that we didn't overshoot by that much. It's, woo, a, a, a big cut and, um, that district has a lot to look at, so.
Member Johnson, number three.
Um, this policy, this is something we were about before. I'm going to make a motion to bring up for the first reading, uh, policy ninety seventy-five, agenda for regular meetings. And I'll pass this over to the chair. I could read it to you. It's a, the additions are the agenda setting will be held on Tuesday, two weeks prior to the regular meeting. All board members are welcome to attend and to participate in this session. Any proposed items submitted by two or more members will be included on the agenda. Also addresses the thing that we were asked to, Mr. Member Walty and I, about written communications. That's also absent being the same policy. And this was adding one item to that paragraph as well. All written communications and emails from verified Duluth residents, um, pertaining to school issues sent to all schools, to the board members and superintendent will be provided in writing. Uh, uh, communications, emails containing private personal educational data, attorney-client privileges or other non-public data under Minnesota government data practices act will have, will have such data redacted. And, uh, that is, uh, I'm making a motion to, uh, add that.
Well, that'll be a, a, a change in policy. We'd have to discuss that in, uh, yeah, in, in, uh, committee. So let's.
And I made a motion on that?
You can't add to the, you can't add to, to the, uh.
Point of order.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm explaining something right now. I'm explaining my point of order. Um, it's not on the agenda. We can't change a policy at this point. We have to go through the proper channels on this one. So, Member Walty then, Member Johnston, or do you want to do your first, John? Mr. Member Johnston?
No, I'll go back to Mr. Walty.
Member Walty.
Um, uh, I'm, I'm not certain that, uh, the bringing up of an, a policy issue in the portion of the Business Committee meeting that has to do with that is necessarily a motion that would be out of order. Uh, I'd have to do some reading through Robert's rules to figure that out. As, as I think everyone here knows, Art and I have attempted to, Member Johnston and I have attempted to have some sort of discussion on agenda setting and, uh, and placement of items on the agenda. And of course, the emails, which I think all the board understood was not terribly controversial. Um, I certainly would be quite happy to withdraw my, my second if, if I had some assurance that there was a consensus that maybe this would be something that we could talk about in the future. Because I, I do think that this is one of those contentious issues, which is making it harder for us all to get together. There's no question what the majority of the school board is on a lot of these issues, but, uh, to deny the minority an opportunity to have a discussion, I think, uh, ill suits our reputation as a deliberative board. So, um, I would withdraw that if, if I was to get some, uh, some sense that maybe a grudging acceptance of, of a discussion about how the policies in this, uh, subject area would, would work. And, and a discussion on that would be most welcome by, by me, as well as I think Member Johnston.
The motion is out of order. Member Johnston, you have a point of order. You have to hit your light. There you go.
Uh, yeah, the point of order is just not out of order.
Okay.
I have, uh, I have, this is my point of order.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, I.
Point of order.
Point of order. Point of order is that it is in, in order and that we're asking for this to be how we have a motion to second on the floor.
And I'm ruling it out of order.
And then I appeal the decision of the chair.
Then I rule it out of order.
I appeal the decision of the chair.
Yep. And I'm ruling it out of order.
Uh, we have a second on that?
I would second.
We're not going to change the agenda. We are not going to, we're in the middle of a business report right now. And it's out of order.
We're not going to appeal your, uh, your decision.
That's, it doesn't need a second.
Yes, it does. You, you can unilaterally, uh, I have appealed your decision. The board has to decide on whether or not they're gonna, uh, uphold the order, calling it out of order. I may, I've, I've made a point of order on that. You've said no. I have appealed that.
Yeah.
So we have to, we are now appealing your decision. That's before the board.
In my, in my opinion, it's out of order. It's, it's not part of our agenda. We can't, you can't insert this into the agenda.
I appreciate that viewpoint and, uh, why I'm appealing it and I'm asking for that is that you're incorrect. Uh, we have brought this before the board. We were asked to bring this toward the board. It was presented to the board, uh, two months ago, two and a half months ago, it was presented to the committee. If we had, we gave previous notice. Previous notice says that when you give it, it will be on the agenda next month. And that hasn't happened. We've, uh, done that. We've, uh, done that twice now. So yes, it is clearly, uh, in order to be on the agenda. And again, as Mr. Welty said, and I will agree with that, if there's some agreement that we are gonna bring this up, I will withdraw this motion. I will withdraw this appeal that we're sitting on right now. But if there's no, uh, no assurance of that, then, uh, the, uh, the appeal is where we're at. I certainly would like to hope that, that, uh, that the board, uh, would decide to hear this in the future.
We had a month to have agenda items submitted. We had no agenda items submitted.
I submitted this three months ago.
For the last, last month, we had none.
I submitted it three months ago, it was previous notice was given. And so we have an appeal that's on the floor.
Member Welty.
Um, Chair Markey, I would point out that if you were to, uh, take the appeal that has been seconded and ask for a vote, your vote, your, your position almost certainly would be upheld, and, and you could proceed on with the rest of the meeting. I'll confess, I'm not, I'm not completely clear on the, the seconding of appeals. It's not something I've, I've done any time recently, but I think if you allowed the board to act as a whole on this, they probably would uphold you. And then, member Johnston, I could not argue the parliamentary point at that point.
And, Mr. Welty is absolutely correct. All it takes is a vote. We expect to get voted down, so you vote, then we go on.
Ah, and again, I can, this one I don't know. This one is a, a appeal to the, the, uh-
Appealing decision of the Chair is a very basic elementary parliamentary procedure. All you have to do is call for the, cause it takes a vote. Uh, vote, the board has to vote whether uphold you or to go against.
Okay.
So just call for a vote.
Member Harla.
Yep, um, so I understand the point of order being, being out of it, so if I were to vote, it would be for that, but would be, sorry.
But I'm sorry, you go ahead first.
Excuse me. Um, I would agree that, that the point is out of order to bring a policy change in the middle of the meeting, so if it were to come to a board vote, would work, would vote for that, but would be open to discussing this as a board, um, moving forward, so thank you.
Is there a second to my, uh, my decision? To call it out of order? Member Harla. Member Johnston?
Uh, you made a decision out of order. I called a, I called a point of order. You ruled against that point of order. I made a motion to appealing the decision of the Chair. It was seconded. All we have to do as a board is vote on whether or not the board is going to up, up, uphold the, your, your motion, or would they side with my appeal of that. That's all it takes, is a call for a vote, and then we go forward. Unless there's more discussion.
Can you vote, or do you want more discussion? All right. Member Welty.
Um, Chair Markey, I, uh, I see your, uh, your anxiety about this. For the sake of common-
I want everything's right.
We have made our point. I will withdraw my second of the appeal, and that, I believe, will end it.
I appreciate that. All right. And, and, uh, all right. Member Johnston, four B change orders.
Yeah, we're just going to ask the administration on this. This is likely, we have a decrease on this. Uh, the total cost that I recall is about eight hundred thousand dollars. Was brought up at the last meeting, that we may have excess money, of money that wasn't spent on the long-range facility plan. And I would ask that the administration pay for this out of, out of that, uh, budget. Although that does disagree with what the state auditor told us, but, uh, that it'd be paid for out of long-range facility funds, rather than us, uh, loving for that as we were, we originally planned to do. And just, just bringing that up and asking that the administration consider that, because we have that option at this point.
All in favor of adopting the business report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five to one. Thank you, member Loffler Kemp. There are no other special resolutions, questions, and others. Member Welty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did send an email out the other day to all of the board members, and I presume that it got in the hands of the administration, as I directed it to the Superintendent to. Former board chairman, a former board member, Rich Paulson, sent me an email. He, uh, bless his heart, has taken it upon himself to read the teacher's contract. I will confess that, uh, having gotten it, uh, a month ago, I've not sat down. I'd asked him if he would read it and pass on his thoughts. Um, uh, I have a couple of questions based upon the things that Mr. Paulson asked. I did say that I would be asking during question time.
Right. If I had to give you a point of order, I, I did read your, uh, your email and discuss this, uh, and, and I think perhaps we can move this to next month's HR meeting and have an open discussion. There are some answers that we have that I can provide you, uh, but, uh, instead of doing it here with people who aren't involved, I was wondering, perhaps, would that be okay? We put it on your HR agenda?
I just, I just looked at the people, and I saw those poor snowborders, so I would be willing if you would, uh, put this on the agenda for discussion.
It will be. Um, member Johnston?
I'm gonna bring up an issue here, which is, uh, um, which I'm very concerned about. Me and my spouse were recently attacked by Mr. Sworowski. I don't, I think it's inappropriate to question my marital status. My sexual orientation is out of order for any public body, and I expect an apology. I've never seen Mr. Sworowski so upset when he was discussing my marital status and sexual preference and orientation. I think it's really out of order. I will be asking the superintendent to, uh, do that, because it is, I've never, if, this is, I cannot believe such behavior was exhibited by our HR director, and I will be asking for an apology.
We have a board member and his significant other, whether it's spouse, wife, or whatever, who are, and have been on tenterhooks for almost half a year. We've been waiting for a report, but we were generally assured would be prepared within about three months, and I am not surprised that tempers are, uh, getting very close to the surface. And I'm willing to overlook an, an awful lot of that, but it is intruding on the, uh, the, uh, the school board from a great many ways, and I suspect that there are an awful lot of us who are a part of this process. And, uh, member, member Johnston, I, I, I sympathize with you a great deal on this, but in the heat of the motion, moment, I understand how, how frayed people's emotions are, and I am the sort of person who's a little reluctant to, to demand public apologies of people. Uh, I certainly hope we as a board and as a school and educational community that spent an awful lot of time on the building policy that you read us some very fine points on just a little while ago can, can move on, but you are still on tenterhooks, and everybody is, is, is under a great deal of pressure. So, um, acknowledging that we have not handled ourselves well as a group, I would be inclined to, to move on and see what sorts of things happen among us privately and, and not so publicly, uh, in, in the future. So, uh, I, I sympathize with everyone here, and I, uh, I kind of blame everyone here, including myself. Um, but I, I, I just, I'd, I'd like us all to, uh, to hold hands and sing kumbaya, and, and there's some hands here that I might not be real eager to hold, and I suspect that that's probably a two-way street.
I would hold your hand, Harry. Member Johnston?
I just wanted to say again, I've never seen such an outburst. If this was said, uh, the student's, uh, marital status or sexual orientation was, was said by an outburst of a person in the administration, there would be, uh, bad things happening. And, uh, again, I'm obviously not an old position for, but, uh, to me, this is really unbelievable, that somebody was allowed to question somebody's marital status, be a very upset, never seen him so upset, in a public meeting, when I'm questioning my marital status, my sexual orientation, completely out of line. If this was a student that he said this to, he wouldn't have his job anymore.
I have a comment. I see, uh, Principal Sconyers there, and I want to apologize to her, because, um, Mr. Westholm and I were invited to the Denfeld Practice on Thursday, and we gave them fire and brimstone and butt up our, our, uh, her past football, uh, plays out at, uh, Public School Stadium, and unfortunately, our, uh, our speech went absolutely nowhere, and apologize to you. I also want to thank member Harla for spotting me as I walked from my own hunting grounds to a Wheeler, and he said, he said, "Yeah, we're gonna walk up to Lincoln," and I looked up. I mean, that's higher than the, the, uh, the Ordox, and I thought, "Oh, my God." And again, it was where Mr. Westholm and I used to play, but, uh, it was just so much fun to see the, the kids. First of all, the kids were just having a great deal of fun, but the teachers, uh, we talked to a number of teachers and administrators as they went up, and we all met on the field, and I'd like to end it on a positive thing. It was just a, a great experience, sunshiny day, and, uh, it's what we need to do, um, with our kids. They, they like it when they see adults there. A lot of UMD athletes were there, and, uh, it was a good, it was a good experience. See no further lights. We are adjourned.